While this meeting for the caucus to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting was, can you all hear me okay? This meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom, uh oh, Freedom of Information Act, correct?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. At this time, thank you Ms. Anna, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Don't move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We do have a short presentation during the council member discussion. Councilman Glover, would you like to introduce the people who have a presentation?
Yes, we have today a guest from the Gullah Farmers Co-op and Mrs. Vernita Door is the executive director and I would have her come forward and bring her colleagues with her and she can introduce them at this time. We wanted to acknowledge that we've been very grateful to council for their donation of the property that we have just renovated. It was donated several years ago but we just want to acknowledge that we appreciate council doing that, thank you.
Thank you Mr. Glover for the introduction and thank you to all of you who will receive us at this time. We are so grateful to be here. We came so that we could meet you. I'm Vernita Door. I'm the executive director of the Gullah Farmers Cooperative. We have Ms. Brooke Brunson, she's our special projects director, and we have Ms. Lee Moss, she's our sales and marketing person. We came here today to tell you thank you so much for everything that you have done for us, how you've stood with us, how you've partnered with us while we work to become who we are. We are in a good place. We have wholesalers that buy from us and we're almost totally self-sufficient and I wanted to tell you thank you for working with us, sticking with us, and listen out because we have more good things to do and to come your way. So thank you.
Ms. Door, I just want to inject, would you please tell them about the potential project with the school district?
Well, I was going to say that.
Oh, okay.
But since you mentioned it, we not only have some major wholesalers buying our products, we also have signed a contract with Beaufort County School Board so that they could buy our produce so that our children can have some of the wonderful delicious healthy produce that we used to enjoy, Mr. Glover, Mr. Dawson, and some others when we were children. And it helped to build us into the strong people that we are today and I think that we owe it to our children. So that's one of many good things that we have done. We have our processing room up and running, the cut and chop. We chop vegetables that we send to the school and we also have the potential to chop and cut for other folks that need that capacity because we have the state-of-the-art machine. Again, we thank you for bearing with us, I hate to say that word, but you understand with a startup, you know, you go through a lot, but thank you for standing with us, that's a better word, and we just wanted to tell you thank you to your faces. So thank you each and every one of you.
Open it up if anybody has any questions.
Did you want to tell us about the baskets behind us?
Well, yes.
Especially the eggplants?
Yes, just a little token of appreciation from us, from our local farmers. We thought that you would enjoy tasting a little bit of what the Gullah Farmers Cooperative has to offer. There is more, but they weren't ready. So thank you so much. Any questions? I'll be glad to hear from any of you. Okay, thank you so much.
I did tell Ms. Howard that you would not bring any oranges here from Walmart.
Never, never, never. Only the best for the best.
How many farmers are now participating about?
We have about seventeen.
Seventeen farmers?
Yes, yes.
Wow.
And growing.
And growing. Some of them are smaller farmers and some of them are larger, like many of you know Mr. Jackie from Barefoot Farms, he's one of the larger ones, and we have some from Charleston, the Low Country still, Mr. Fields and Freeman, and we have Mr. Snipes and some others. I won't start naming because you'll miss while I start naming, but I will stop naming, but yeah.
Our goal is for all of our farmers to be GAAP certified, which is, that is GAAP certified. Our fat farmers are GAAP certified and we reject any produce that isn't up to our standards immediately.
Yes, yes.
Everything is refrigerated immediately.
Yeah. Now these bits of produce that you have, we didn't test, we normally taste test everything, but we just got them in and so you're the taste tester.
Okay.
So enjoy.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate it. And Ms. Doors on the Beaufort Memorial Hospital board, wanted to give you another credit for that volunteer work that you do and
My pleasure.
Retired from the federal government in Washington DC at a very high level, two tone. Please, please share with all of us.
What I'm most proud of is that I'm a native Beaufortonian. I grew up here, went to the public schools here, went to the University of South Carolina. I'm a Gamecock, go Gamecocks. I had to do that. I heard a clap, yay, yeah, yeah, one clap, but anyway, yeah, thank you for that. And my roots are here. My mother grew up on St. Helena, my father was out in Hampton County, and so everything for me is local. And just the goodness of Beaufort, I remember my dad would always say, there's no place like Beaufort. My husband, he said, there's no place like Beaufort. And I say, and I'm sure most of you will agree, there's no place like Beaufort, none unmatched, and we love it. Thank you for making it.
We're glad you came back.
Thank you for making it better.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
We'll leave you.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Okay. All right. Everyone, don't forget your basket. If you do, someone else will, I'm sure, take it. All right. At this time, I don't think we have any other council member discussion because we'll have liaison reports during the regular meeting. I need a motion to go into executive session and I'll read what these items are before the motion's made.
Don't move.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
And we have a second to go in executive session for the following. Under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2, legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege, discussion of a process related to an application for a development agreement related to 98 Jennings Road. Number seven, under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2, legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements or other matters covered by attorney-client privileges, discussion of a process related to an application for a development agreement related to Pine Island. Number eight, under South Carolina 30-4-70A2, receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending litigation, Woodlake Villas Owners Association versus Beaufort County regarding the claim of inverse condemnation, breach of an evasion easement. Those items will be discussed in executive session. Do I have a motion? Do we already have a motion to go in? All in favor?
Motion and second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, we will adjourn. There may or may not be items to come out of executive session.
I'd like to call the meeting of the County Council for June 9th order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation by Councilman Lawson.
(Inaudible)
Lord, we ask for your blessing. Let us be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to anger. Let us use the wisdom you have given us to make decisions that are best for many and not just the few. Let us protect those who cannot protect themselves. Let us put our pride and personalities aside to be productive for those we represent. Please bless our employees, staff, elected officials. Please bless and protect our law enforcement and first responders and keep them safe. We thank you for the blessing of allowing us to live in such a beautiful place as Beaufort County. Amen.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor by show of hands? And that is unanimous. Do you have another motion regarding legal advice?
Madam Chair, I actually do. I move that staff set up interviews with representatives from outside law firms so that the executive committee may conduct interviews and make a recommendation to council to engage the services of an attorney to represent council in reviewing and negotiating a development agreement in regards to the Ramsey Farm Development Agreement application.
Do we have a second?
So moved.
We have a second by Councilman Cunningham. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor by show of hands? And that is unanimous. Okay, number six on our executive session agenda, do we have a motion regarding the Pine Island?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Item number seven.
It's item number seven, we completed number six.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that council refer the Pine Island Development Agreement application to a special called council meeting for discussion and a public hearing at the earliest opportunity after the staff report and legal review has been completed and council has had adequate opportunity to review the staff report.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Bartholomew. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call vote on that? No, okay, all in favor by show of hands? And it is unanimous. I need another motion for number seven in regard to number seven concerning legal.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion. I move that staff set up interviews with representatives from outside law firms so that the executive committee may conduct interviews and make a recommendation to council to engage the services of an attorney to represent council in reviewing and negotiating a development agreement in regards to the Pine Island Development Agreement application.
I'll second that motion.
A second by Councilman Cunningham, all in favor by show of hands? And that is unanimous, all right. Number eight on the executive session agenda is regarding a navigation easement and actions. Do we have a motion?
I move that council waive any potential conflict of interest which might exist with Mr. Andrew Lindeman representing Beaufort County in the case of Woodlake Villas Owners Association versus Beaufort County. It is expressly understood that Mr. Lindeman currently represents the South Carolina Insurance Reserve Fund in the case of Beaufort County versus South Carolina Insurance Reserve Fund, and council waives this conflict of interest.
Do we have a second?
So moved.
A second by Councilman Passamit. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor by show of hands? And that is unanimous. There are no further actions to come out of executive session. The caucus is hereby adjourned, and we will start the regular council meeting in five minutes. I'd like to call the meeting of the county council for June 9th order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and stay standing for the invocation by Councilman Lawson.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we ask for your blessing. Let us be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to anger. Let us use the wisdom you have given us to make decisions that are best for many and not just the few. Let us protect those who cannot protect themselves. Let us put our pride and personalities aside to be productive for those we represent. Please bless our employees, staff, elected officials. Please bless and protect our law enforcement and first responders and keep them safe. We thank you for the blessing of allowing us to live in such a beautiful place as Beaufort County. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. This meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act in South Carolina. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Mr. Dawson.
Okay, thank you, all in favor by show of hands to approve the agenda? All right. We have minutes from May 27th of the caucus and county council meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor by show of hands to approve the minutes from May 27th? And it is unanimous. Okay, at this time we have administrator's report. Oh, switch sides.
Good evening, Madam Chair, County Council. Glad to be here tonight. We have a number of recognitions that are pretty exciting, so looking forward to that. So without further ado, we'll get started. The first is we have an employee from disability and special needs. This is Zakiya Hill Thompson, hopefully I got that right. Here she is. Is that right?
Zakiya.
Zakiya.
Nice to meet you.
Zakiya is with, she's a direct care specialist with the Disability and Special Needs Department. You've been with the county for 15 years, so that's a good accomplishment. Summary for her duties, she assists intellectually disabled residential clients with ADLs or activities of daily living. Something unique about Zakiya to share publicly, she has a unique name that describes a pure, bright, and intelligent person. We can all agree with that. She is originally from Connecticut and moved to Beaufort, South Carolina 16 years ago. DSN was her first job opportunity, and in your interview with Wanda, you stated that you believed in longevity, so obviously you're a person of your word, so we're glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
So would you like to make any comments?
I just appreciate the recognition, and it's a team effort at DSN, so it's not just one person, but I appreciate it. And I continue to keep doing what I do best. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have a recognition of broadcast services receiving four tele awards. And I have to admit, I didn't know what a tele award was. I know what Emmys, I know what Oscars, but believe it or not, a tele award is a national award that honors excellence in video and television across all screens. It was founded in 1979 to honor local, regional, and cable television commercials with non-broadcast video and television programming added soon after. And it's award, the award has evolved with the rise of digital video to include branded content, documentary, social media, immersive, and more. The tele awards today celebrate the best work in the video medium in an era of moving image on and offline. So as you know, our Beaufort County television in our department has broadcast, the statistics here are impressive, 417 live local government council committee meetings for the county, for the school district, for the town of Hilton Head Island, and the town of Bluffton. They also broadcast Beaufort County High School graduations, fall and spring commencements for USC B and TCL, and a variety of local events in our area. The dedicated team also produces interviews, promotional videos, and television commercials to promote county departments, and has recently expanded into original podcast programming. For the 2025 season, the Beaufort County Broadcast Department was recently awarded five tele awards in a nationwide competition. These awards are as follows, and I will be calling some individuals up. We don't have the actual award, but they are, they are here. So first off, we've got Troy Matthews. He placed silver in the category of diversity, equity, and inclusion for the show Live, Work, Play's episode featuring Full Spectrum Studios.[884.01][884.01](Applause). And with that, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Yeah. I'd like to thank Hannah, Mr. Vincent, and Cassie Hedin, who told me about Full Spectrum. Enjoy coming to work, love the team that I work with. Thank you for the honor.
Awesome.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, I've enjoyed his broadcasting, but Troy, I never knew that you looked so much like your father every day now, so that's all I want to say there.
Great, so next we've got Kyla Pope-Williams, who placed bronze in two categories. One is series non-scripted for the show Our Schools, featuring Robert Smalls Leadership Academy, and a second bronze tele in the category of series, education, and discovery for the same episode. Next we have Chloe Gee, who placed bronze in the category of general social video for this year's coverage of the 2024 Hilton Head Island Lantern Parade, which explored the origins of the lantern parade and how it's evolved into a major annual event for the Low Country. And finally, in the category of live events and experiences, the entire broadcast crew received a bronze award for their coverage of the 53rd Annual Town of Bluffton Christmas Parade, which is a massive team effort, and the team has been broadcasting this since 2011. Congratulations.
Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Mr. Moore, for the introduction and everything. Great team, as you guys know, we appreciate your support, and we love covering the meetings. We get all these trophies for all these extra stuff at the meetings. That's what we love, so thank you. It is, it is.[1055.13][1055.13](Laughter).[1056.13][1056.13](Applause).
Okay, next, we have recognition of all aboard Beaufort Coalition and its dedicated volunteers. I believe they're here, so I think they're going to come forward. As they come up, I'll go ahead and read. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the outstanding efforts of this coalition and its dedicated volunteers. The remarkable group represents a diverse fabric of northern Beaufort County, including parents, students, educators, law enforcement, local government, and volunteer organizations. Together, they work tirelessly to reduce youth substance misuse through education, advocacy, and community engagement. From April 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2025, these volunteers donated impressive 1,168.5 hours to all aboard Beaufort and other local organizations, demonstrating their deep commitment to promoting healthier, safer communities for our youth. And we're especially proud tonight to recognize five exceptional individuals. Azariah Wilson. Hello. Is it Mady Oreg Green? Right here. Tiani Green. And Kimberly Godin. Godin? Godin, okay, sorry about that. He was recently honored with the President's Volunteer Service Award at a Star Youth Leadership Meeting on St. Helens Island. Collectively, they contributed 6,791.75 volunteer hours, and were each awarded the Bronze President's Volunteer Service Award Medal and Certificate for their service. Azariah Wilson, who also received our very first all aboard Beaufort graduation cord. She'll be heading off to college this fall to pursue a degree in nursing, and this is an inspiring example of the bright future we're helping to build. So let's join them in celebrating the inspiring dedication and positive impact they make in
I just wanted to add, I know this group worked really hard during prom weeks with the, with the local, and also the coroner's office helped with that too, to help teenagers make the right choices.
I just want to say a couple words and thank these individuals. These are a true testament to the reason why our community is the way that it is. Their service and their willingness to go out and provide volunteer hours is incredible. So the amount of hours that they've given as a group is just, it warms my heart and the reason why I love this, this community. So thank you.
I might want to say your name.
Oh, I am Jodi Martinez, and I am the project coordinator for our group.
So the public knows. Thank you.
Thank you.[1258.42][1258.42](Applause).
Okay, next we have recognition of Rachel McColsky. Hopefully I got that right.
McColsky?
McColsky?
Yeah.
Thank you. Administrative Deputy Coroner.
Yes.
Great, I got that right. She was selected as the Deputy Coroner of the Year for the Low Country Region by the South Carolina Coroner's Association. That's quite an honor, congratulations. She's an outstanding employee with an insatiable desire to continuously learn anything related to the coroner's office. She does an exceptional job as the administrative deputy coroner, reviewing all case files and ensuring they are complete and accurate, as well as making sure all the documents are in the file. She goes above and beyond to make sure the office is run in a top-notch manner. She comes in at night, holidays, weekends, to certify death certificates so funeral homes and families do not have to wait, which I know is very important to those families. Excellent skills with dealing with the public, vendors, on a daily basis. She is always pleasant and has a positive attitude, and consistently asking others if they need help in any way and does what she can to help them. She's shown nothing but growth advancement in her role as the administrative deputy coroner, and we congratulate you on that award.
Thank you very much. Not a public speaker, so I'll make it quick. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for all of my coworkers and my family that is here. Sorry to witness this, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. So that concludes the recognitions. I do have a couple of updates for council, to provide to council. I know we've gotten some emails about the Buckingham Landing float, and we had discussed this previously, but I just want to let you all know, we're going to be approving an emergency purchase for repairs needed at the Buckingham Landing float. Based on staff assessment, it does need to be repaired as an emergency due to hazard it may pose to the public while it's in operation. We have received one quote, we're waiting for a second quote, and hope to be in a position to make that evaluation early this week and execute the purchase order and contract. So that's item number one. Item number two, at the legislative reception last Friday, Senator Davis reported, and I'm going to report it here, and I checked with him, and so I have the language right. Chairman White from the CIB told him last week that everything seems to be in order regarding the county resubmission of the Highway 278, the IGA for the, for the bridge repairs, or I should say replacement. The CIB board will meet to consider on around June 23rd, 2025. Chairman White is in contact with the South Carolina Department of Transportation Secretary Powell regarding the timing of the approval, and DOT may need to give us a few more days for the approval, given the 30-day deadline, but we don't anticipate any problems with that. So I just wanted to provide you all that update. So pending any questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions? Good news, all around.
Yes, okay, thank you.
It will work. It's going to work.
All right, moving on on our agenda, Councilmember David Bartholomew is going to read a proclamation recognizing the month of June as Elevate Fatherhood Month.
Thank you, Chairwoman Howard. Is there anybody from the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families here? Come on up, please.
Don't forget Father's Day coming up.
Father's Day's great. It's Father's Day.
I'm going to read this proclamation, and whereas fathers represent the foundational element of resilient families providing love, guidance, and support to their children, and whereas the significant influence of fathers on their children's development is profound, as they impart values, encourage personal growth, and nurture resilience, and whereas the South Carolina Center for Fathers and Families established in 2002 has emerged as a pivotal source of support, equipping tens of thousands of fathers throughout our state with essential resources and knowledge to fulfill their responsibilities in fatherhood, and whereas the longstanding collaboration between the center and South Carolina Department of Social Services alongside other state, local, and private entities has facilitated the center's expansion into all 46 counties and the enhancement of innovative programs designed to better serve a greater number of fathers. And whereas the center has successfully supported, developed, and broadened its Father 365 statewide network of regional fatherhood organizations that directly impact thousands of fathers and families every year, and whereas when fathers take an active role in leading and engaging with their children, these young individuals thrive in social, emotional, and academic domains, and whereas the month of June presents an opportunity for all citizens of our country to celebrate and honor the essence of fatherhood, acknowledging the unwavering efforts of fathers in shaping the future of our communities, and whereas throughout the county, we encourage all citizens of Beaufort County, South Carolina, to express their gratitude for fathers in their lives, and whereas this initiative aims to celebrate the significant contributions of fathers and to promote their active involvement in the lives of their children. Such involvement is essential for enhancing the well-being of young individuals, cultivating responsible citizens, and strengthening families and communities across our country. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim June 2025 as Elevate Fatherhood Month, dated this 9th day of June 2025, and signed by our chairwoman Alice Howard. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.[1630.13][1630.13](Applause). Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, we tell it.
Good.
Back and address us, or if you want to address the crowd?
I just want to say, and this is Curtis Hopkins from our Beaufort office, we do have 17 full services offices around the state, and Beaufort, we have a brand-new part-time office, so we're bringing programs and services into the county here. As the proclamation said, we've been here since 2002 to oversee an umbrella, as an umbrella over all the fatherhood work in, in every county in this state. There are an estimated 40,000 to 50,000 fathers in South Carolina who are still disconnected from their children, and our role in working with our affiliates like Curtis here is to bring dads back together with their children, teach them with the programs, educational programs, provide them services so that they can reconnect, become better parents, become great dads, and have a stable family. Stable families make stable communities and good communities, and that's what we do. We're so pleased and honored by Beaufort County to allow us the privilege to elevate fatherhood. I should say next Sunday, Happy Father's Day to all you dads in the room, and everyone has a dad, everyone has a dad's story, and, and this is the time to really, this is like Christmas for us, to where we bring together the visibility of dads. I'd like Curtis just to talk about a moment about what's going on in Beaufort.
First of all, I want to thank the council, it's been a pleasure serving in Beaufort County. We operate out of 80 Ladies Allen Road. We offer our services. It is our job and our mandate to alleviate many of the barriers that most of the men struggle with as it relates to fatherhood. We offer an 18-week curriculum dealing with parenting, healthy relationships, letting them understand the importance of fatherhood, understanding their child's needs, and understanding healthy relationships and economic mobility. We believe that when we inspire fatherhood, children can thrive. So it is a pleasure being in this community, it's a pleasure serving the men in this community, and we see a great progress, we have seen great progress in the men that we have been serving, and it's just, once again, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1793.21][1793.21](Applause).
Next, next we have a proclamation rec- Next, next we have a proclamation recognizing the week of July 26 through August 2nd as Gulligichi Nation Appreciation Week and Councilmember Glover will do that proclamation.
Yes, yes ma'am. Before I do that proclamation, can I ask the chair for a privileged moment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Take this with me so I don't come back. Madam Chairman, just before our caucus session, Renita Dour, who's the executive director of the Gullah Farmers Co-op, made a presentation at that time and presented a gift basket of vegetables, local vegetables, that was given to all council members and I just wanted to, oh, these are, these are tomatoes.
Yes.
I just wanted to acknowledge that because it was done during the caucus session and a lot of time, a lot of the public don't view the caucus session. So, with that in mind, because I have been a part of the Gullah Co-op, I can probably go down there and pick up a few things that they throw away. So, I'm going to take this opportunity to give this to our county administrator for him to enjoy.
Okay, all right. Thank you. There's some corn and eggplant and other good things in there and tomatoes. All right.
And now at this time, Madam Chairman, Queen Quet would come forward and there's a proclamation.
Councilman Glover, if you'll read it into the microphone so it'll be recorded.
Yes, ma'am. The proclamation, whereas Beaufort County was founded in 1711 and whereas the founding native Gulligichi were here in this coastal region in our state and whereas the Gulligichi have been essential to the cultural fabric of our community and whereas we have celebrated their contribution by actively being, actively being a part of the Gulligichi Nation Appreciation Week since July 22nd, 2013 and whereas 2025 marks St. Helena Island's own Chief Queen Quet's 25th Anniversary as head pundit body of the Gulligichi Nation and whereas Gulligichi has led the movement to protect Gulligichi culture, human rights, land, and water, water rights for over four decades during which she founded the Gulligichi Sea Island Coalition and whereas the Gulligichi Sea Island Coalition was the first organization in the world history to have Gulligichi in its name and whereas the Gulligichi Sea Island Coalition continues to forward the mission of the Gulligichi Nation and whereas this is the 25th anniversary of the Gulligichi Nation, now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim July 26 through August 2nd, 2025 as Gulligichi Appreciation Week in our county and call upon all of our citizens to participate in celebrating the week in support of the activities happening locally and throughout the region under the theme 25 Years of Self-Determination, Celebrating the Roots and Legacy of the Gulligichi Nation. It is signed this day, July 9th, 2025 by Council Chairperson Alice Howard.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Have the mic.
Thank you, thank you, sir. This mine.
That shit was okay.
Don't teach my thing. Look here. Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Glad to be here one more again and I've been wondering why I've been to sit there at Councilman Glover while I've been sitting there, what been coming in my head been staying there field, oh, staying there field, staying there field until the war is ended. We used to crack we tea to sing that all the time and we church fund Historics in Tell Island, which still at the epicenter of Gulligichi culture. So, then I said, well, I could sing or I ain't could sing. God said, you could sing. And I said, I said, well, they might don't want me for singing, yeah, but I could sing if God says sing. Then he come out with the basket and I said, okay then. Now, why God be had me for say, well, I've been going say, attach greeting to that. Now, I know if he in that basket any cukes there in it. I know if any there in it.
No, no.
Okay, but that been what God tell me since the other day when I been in my field from Centele Island. Said, this year where you have to tell that county council when you get there, that's your time, but the cukes were there in the field. Now, the rest of people know, yeah, they're going to call them cukes and things like that, y'all call them cucumbers. And then, when you ain't there from the San Vonage Point and things like that, if you ain't from the field, you can, how cukes did it and you ain't going to know they did it. Then they go rotten and done dead. And so, a lot of people who don't have the same vantage point as native Gulligiches, who literally grew up on these sea islands, actually putting our hands in the soil, toiling in the heat, harvesting, realize we have a different vantage point than others about our community and our culture. And it struck me about that vantage point because I was in my field the other day and the tomatoes are easy to see and especially when they turn red, easy to see. So, I'm glad that my brother didn't get to them before I did. So, I get out there and I'm going to get those, but then God said, no, go on your next row. And I looked from a distance at that row outside the fence because I need a fence. Now, I didn't need it before, but the deers want to eat more than I do. They want to harvest before I get there. So, we need a fence. Outside the fence, it looked like there wasn't anything for me to look at on that next row. But when I stepped over there, I had to put my hand down and look between the leaves and there were two big cucumbers like this, one of which I just ate before I came here to be prepared for tonight in case they say, bring a lunch when you come to county council meetings. And so, I ate before I got here and God said, that's what the problem is. People who have come into Beaufort County now have a different vantage point and for all my life, people have had a different vantage point. They couldn't see the value in Gulligichi people, our culture, and whether it was the way we crack we tea and things like that, but I have lived to go all over the world now and to all 50 states and people say you all are brilliant for holding on to your culture and your community and keeping your area the way your ancestors kept it, rural, healed, healthy waterways, healthy land that you can harvest from, but you would have your harvest rot in the field if you don't have the right vantage point, if you don't know how to see where the fruit that's being born is. And so, even when I was traveling last week and I had a behind-the-scenes visit with Disney to see what he did, the vision he had to make sure that there were thousands of acres that were going to remain rural, that were going to remain forested, 11,500 acres I got to see away from everything else. And the beauty is that most people who go there and hang out with Minnie and Mickey and the rest of them, they never realize this place is there, but the birds do, but these special monarch butterflies do, other creatures I'd never heard of, I learned about. And I sat there thinking about how St. Helena is still that place, is still that place that we can say is an epicenter of Gulligichi culture because someone had the vision and the vantage point to see the beauty of it and to sustain it and keep it that way and not let it become a resort area like everything else around us, become gated off like everything else around us on the sea islands up and down the coast. So, I see now the harvesting at Penn Center. I see now the harvesting at the Gullah Co-op. I see now the harvesting with the St. Helena Gullah Housing Project. I see now the harvesting at our CDC, all these things that nobody thought would happen. I see the harvesting at Fort Fremont. I've been engaged with the St. Helena Branch Library and everything else that I just named over all these years that people used to ask the question like they did with Dr. King was here, they put a headline up that said, can anything good come out of Frogmore? Well, I'm glad I'm a good, my last name Goodwine, but some goodness came out of Frogmore. Goodness came out from Seaside Road on St. Helena Island because we had vision to protect the whole place and what's around us. So, I want to thank you because one of the greatest meetings for me recently was sitting there in the St. Helena Branch Library, having you finally come meet there in that space and announce the next night, there's a new center coming and then to see the plethora of summer school programs, the summer programs that are also harvesting knowledge from our community. So, I don't want you to be misled in any way that all this work that you see in the headlines is coming because somebody new came, it's coming from those who are already there. You just have to have the right vantage point and look and you would see them to be there that are bringing all this harvest and things like that in the community and things like that, toe-toe. So, on St. Helena, y'all already have this whole packet of materials. These are just events that we're going to be hosting on St. Helena Island, most of them at Penn Center this summer in celebration also of Gulligichi Nation Appreciation Week and I'll leave some out there for the public, but all of you have it already and I also entered it into the public record. But there are a number of things that we're doing up and down the coast, have already been doing for this whole 25th anniversary of the Gulligichi Nation and I'm also going to be going back to other parts of the world this year to celebrate with others who say, continue to hold on just a little while longer, everything going to be all right. So, we have to stay in the field harvesting the truth, but who we do down here. And I said, thank you, thank you to Beaufort County Council because y'all been know that. That why I'm on the children been to celebrate with we so long, but this year, it going to be a shouting time for true. So, I hope that I'm going to do it from Centele Island on July 26th. I hope you're there at noon when the drums sound once again to honor the legacy of my ancestors, my elders who knew what to plant in that sea island soil because we're still growing in this harvest time. God bless you, Beaufort County. Peace, love, and blessings. I appreciate the honor.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will, we have a list of people for public comment. I'd like to remind the public that every member of the public who is recognized to speak shall limit comments to three minutes and observe the following protocol. Address the chairman and in speaking, avoid disrespect to council and any personalities. Confine themselves to questions under the jurisdiction of the council and be mindful and respectful of those who are present and others who may be watching on television. First person that has signed up is Felice Lamarcas, who will speak about 98 Jennings Road.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have been involved in rezoning, as you know, for a couple of years now, so you know what my mantra is. I was at the planning commission meeting when the rezoning of the 86 acres was presented and I was at natural resources committee as well. And here's what I would like you to think about because this is coming before you for another vote for first reading. I have to ask you why. Why are we upzoning every T2 rural in this county? Where is the need? We need affordable housing. Yes, we do. Why isn't the whole project affordable housing then? Why do we get 244 units and only 10 affordable housing? Let's, let's ask the developers to put up or shut up, okay? You want to upzone Beaufort County, then let's get something back for it. You're going to put 500 cars on 21, 170, remember 170, they're all going to 170, 21, Robert Smalls Parkway and right now Boundary Street is impassable to fire trucks and the police and I witnessed this. There's nowhere for the cars to go to make way. So, I have to ask you why. I continue to hear numbers one through nine, the reasons that you approve these developments. Okay, we need to change the comprehensive plan. It isn't working. To use the T4 Hamlet as the excuse for increasing density in this county is a sham and a shame. So, I've offered before, I'm going to offer again, I would like someone to reach out to me and tell me how to get it going to change the comprehensive plan again because that's where the failing is and you're failing Beaufort County citizens who have already told you no more upzoning. You're failing us to continue this. It may be needed in your district, I don't know, I don't know, but it's not needed in Beaufort County because you never fix the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Phil McDonaghy. Topic is Pine Island?
Good evening. My name is Phil McDonaghy. I'm vice chair of the CPO Committee. I just want to share a few things here. I'm just, first, I want to thank the county council for upholding the CPO. It just simply shows that you, you really have a heart and you care about people and cultures that may not even be of your own culture, but you care. You consider it enough and you care and I can't thank you all enough. But I'm just confounded at the amount of times that we have to keep coming back, back and forth addressing the same thing and each time we come in, there's a mixed multitude of people that are coming in that are supposedly supporting the Pine Island development and they come in and they have these shirts on and there's a lot of misrepresentation going on about projects that they've helped to, to bring into fruition and help the community. Stop it, it's just too much. These shirts, you see, you see shirts out there. I, I talked to two or three, two people specifically at the last, at the planning committee. I said, you're supporting the Pine Island? Oh, I didn't know this, what this shirt for, they just gave me a bunch of shirts out there, they just giving them up. Stop it. You don't have that kind of support? You're just making it look like you have that kind of support. And, and, and it's just really, it's really confounds me how many times we have to come back and revisit the same thing. A minute and a half, had no clue how much I can say in three minutes. But the mixed multitude of people that come in supposedly in support of Pine Island, I mean, you have people, one gentleman came in and he was saying, you're just a bunch of ignorant niggers. He said it three times before, thankfully, the council, the council's chairperson stepped in and cut him off. You have people that come in with these rehear, with these scripts. If you're going to have a script to read, doggone it, at least rehearse it and know how to pronounce the words, all right? And then you have people, and then you have some that say their claims.
Please don't repeat the word that you already said.
I, I sure not, but I'm not saying that that was, that was instructed of the person to say that, but he was speaking on behalf of that party, so who else am I going to, who else am I going to blame for that? Not my words, that was his and I'm, I'm just repeating what he said. But you have, we've, the council has over and over said no and I can only assume that it's just not getting through their thick head. So, I'm just going to say no in a couple of, in some different languages and maybe one of them might set in. In English, it's just no. Even in Spanish, it's no. In German, it's nein. In French, it's nana. In Dutch, it's, it's nee. In Sweden and Turkish, no matter how you say it, or I'll just say it in, in Italian, which is the homeland or the culture from which the developer comes from, it's just nuh.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the list of people is Frank Soule, or is it Sole? Soule, Frank Soule, all right. Island Rec. Island Rec is his topic.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Frank Soul. I'm the executive director of Parks and Recreation for the Island Recreation Association. Quick reminder, the Island Recreation Association is a nonprofit organization that's provided recreation programs to the town of Hilton Head and people in Bluffton for 40-plus years. I'm here tonight hoping that during your discussion of the budget on the third reading that you, there will be reconsideration of funding as fully as the $200,000 that was recommended by the county administrator in my presentation that I made a few weeks ago to your, the finance committee here. And hopefully that tonight, there'll be some type of discussion on that. I saw that, that funding had been reduced in the minutes that were provided in your agenda. So hopefully there'll be some discussion tonight. And as you know, once again, we're a nonprofit. In my 40 years of running the business, I know that every dollar counts. And certainly your help, not only to the folks on Hilton Head, but in Bluffton will go a long ways. I'm here on behalf of the swimming pool. Last year, we had over 77,000 participant visits there. This winter, we're able to provide swimming in the winter months. And we also provide scholarships. If you look, last year, we provided, two years ago, we provided $270, $270,000 in scholarships. This year, with your help, we were able to raise that to $250,000. So we hopefully that help will continue, at least at the level that was recommended by the county administrator. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Soul. Next is Arnold L. Brown. Subject is the CPO.
Good evening. Like to thank the county council, county council for their service and upholding the CPO. Want to bring your attention to the Island News on page one dated around May 29. It says the chocolate tree business is closing. I was a little upset by that because I was a customer, and I think they made great chocolate, you know, east of Germany. But I'm willing to go out on a limb and say, and say that they didn't come in here and ask for a bailout. Okay? About three years ago, before the developer purchased the property, I was told that there were two buyers. One buyer wanted to build 165 homes. The other buyer wanted to build 65 homes and a golf course. They wanted to know if I would support the 65-home golf course development. I just listened. I didn't give them answer yea or nay. I just listened. Usually when there are two buyers, it was listed for $21 million. Usually when you have more than one buyer, the price goes up. Price does not go down. The price went down, the sales price went down to $18 million. So that tells me there were not two buyers. On May 29, the Island Packet ran a story. Pine Island Development Hits A Major Roadblock. There was a unanimous recommendation from the planning committee that the development not be approved. We asked that you hold to their recommendation and not give them a final approval for changes to the current zoning. We asked that the council will set emotions aside. We all need to set our emotions aside and just make a rational decision based on the zoning, based on the laws that we have on the book. We ask for nothing more than that. You know, we are emotional about it, but we had to look at the laws, look what was written, and see if it made sense. And it made sense. It does not allow for what the developer is asking. Penn, one other, Penn Center's been around for 162 years. And the reason why it's been there has great volunteers. One lady that just passed away last recently is Barbara Gardner. She was a tremendous volunteer. She was a Girl Scout leader, and she, I don't think she ever came to a meeting. But when you go to an event and something happens special, you would ask, her name would be called in the background that she was working on that project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Last on the list is David Mitch, is it David Mitchell? Correct?
My name is David Yocely Mitchell, Madam Chair, County Commission. How are you doing? Thank you so much. Little tense. Let's all dial it back. We have something really wonderful. Councilmember Bartholomew, thank you for Father's Day. I'm sending my son to child, my, my child to college in August. So it is a complex thing, so it is a big deal. Councilmember Glover, thank you so much for bringing this up about Queen Quette. And I'm here tonight to say something about Queen Quette because I think it's important. When you, 25 years, for some of you, 25 years isn't a big deal. For some of us, it is. And for those of us that are getting older, 25 years is a little uncomfortable. But 25 years is a big deal. It means you've done something and you get an award in a situation like this. It means that you've been recognized by your peers and you're being acknowledged that you've contributed in some way or another society, something all of you are doing at this very moment and that we're very grateful for. But the big thing I want to say is she's referenced the Penn Center. I am the current board chair of the Penn Center, and it is a big deal. I get to see the opportunity of what society can be, what people have achieved, what courage is created, and what society is able to do. Beaufort is lightning in a bottle. What you have here is unparalleled. There's nothing else like this in the country. I live in Atlanta, Georgia. I just watch the budget pass. I assure you, it is raucous out there. But this is civilized. This is something that people would love to have as calling their home. And you have something like the Penn Center to anchor it. And you have someone like Queen Quette to provide a steady hand in things like the upcoming heritage, which I appointed her as the chairman of that committee, which was a very wise and good choice for me. And we have just so many wonderful things. And so I know it gets exhausting. It's a minute and 28, and I'm going to try to be seen, be heard, and be gone because you're going, it looks like you have a long night ahead of you. But I have to be very clear about something. What you do is important. What you contribute is important. And Queen Quette is one of the reasons we have anchors in society to hold us and bind us, to remind us that giving and that love is all that really matters. The Penn Center exemplifies that. And we have, you know, since 1862, we've been doing it. I think we do it better than anybody else, and we're here in your home. And so it is a privilege to be here. Thank you for letting me speak this evening, and thank you for honoring Queen Quette because she is also a big deal as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. We have no further public comments. At this time, we're going to have liaison and committee reports of Burton Fire District. We have anything to report from them? I don't think we do. Councilman Dawson, okay? Beaufort Memorial Hospital, both myself and, and Vice Chairman Tavernet go to those meetings. They are in, in process of interviewing people for two vacancies on their board. Do you have anything else tabbed to report from him? That was it?
It's always interesting to go.
Yes, there are always things going on. Design Review Board, Ms. Brown is absent tonight. They did meet last week. I did not attend their meeting. I don't, I don't think Councilman Glover did either. Councilman Glover and I both attended the planning commission meeting. Would you like to give a report on what they discussed, Councilman Glover? It was, it was very interesting.
Quickly, help me, I'm getting old now, so I can't remember from yesterday what I was doing. So at the planning commission meeting, they, they did talk about an opportunity they will be presenting as some change to the statute that would allow more engagement of council as far as protecting and working with community to preserve their cultural place, in particular cemeteries that's all around, not St. Helena, all around Beaufort County. And they will be bringing forward, hopefully, a recommendation from the planning commission that we engage. And it's called the Community Local Something, but it's a national designation that is necessary, and the language has to be there in our ordinance that will support federal funding to support that. Did I say that right?
You did. And it will bring us into, in line with the state and federal so that we might be eligible for some types of grants to help locate. As you well know, some of these cemeteries, the actual graves are not marked, but they are adjacent to marked graves. So it may enable us to be, as a county, to be eligible for that. The Low Country Regional Transportation Authority, I think, met. Any news from it, from anybody?
That would be.
No? Okay. All right. All right. Do you have some other reports?
We have LATS. I think that's what you were thinking of.
Right.
The Low Country Area Transportation Study met on Friday. The board passed an amendment to the tip to give $80,000 in state mass transit funds to, our fund for DeFuski Island Ferry Service. There was a long discussion on South Carolina 315, 46, 170. It just went on, and the Bluffton Parkway extension. It's called the Corridor Study. There were some options for extending the Bluffton Parkway. SCDOT would like to use as many existing roads as possible instead of building an extension through the great swamp behind Sun City. They had lots of discussion for crossing for pedestrians at that roundabout at 170 and 46 that I hear from people about, and long-term widening of 170. Craig Nguyen from SCDOT gave updates about the 728 million, give or take, awarded for the three phases of I-95. The first phase is exit three to eight, which will impact us. Brian gave, from our local here, Brian Bauer, gave an update on the 278 corridor project. We had an update from Paul Metalbreeze and the corridor study. Will be coming in August, and they will have a large crowd because that is also going to include 5B. And for this, the school district, I usually report, congratulations to Colonel Guyer, the chair, and Dr. Rodriguez for making it through eight graduations, six graduations. They were from June 5 to June 8, and you survived them all, I take it, correct? Yes, and they're all outside, right? So they're all in the heat and with the NATS. Yes, congratulations. Yes. And we'll hear from the school board a little bit later with their referendum.
Councilman Bartholomew, do you have a report?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of things I want to say. Last week, the city of Beaufort's Waterfront Advisory Committee met. Y'all appointed me to be on that committee. It's going to be a wonderful, wonderful group of people, and we're trying to find solutions to fixing and repairing the waterfront park. Looking forward to working with that group of individuals. Also, just want to make the public aware of the, one of the biggest things coming out of the Community Services Committee last week was an updated animal ordinance. I know that there's several people in the community that's already reached out. Welcome feedback coming in on that. And also, the last couple of times, I've done a updating request for applications for the Solid Waste and Recycling Board. Believe that we have two completed applications now that staff's working through, and thank you all for getting the word out. So thanks.
Councilman Cunningham?
I don't have a report to give. I would like to make two statements, if that's okay? I promise they're not confrontational. One, I'm glad that LATS is looking at that road behind Sun City because when we've been up here fighting 5B for the past five years, we've been telling people how the next step they're going to go for is that road between Sun City and Cypress Ridge. And if you think the people on 5B are mad, imagine what Sun City's going to say. Secondly, I would just like to make one, I guess, statement to a comment made for us. I've been on council for going on five years now. We've approved one upzoning in those five years, and that parcel went from, they allowed to build an office building with a residential property above it, and I think it was up to like 5,000 square feet. So this council's been pretty on board for shutting down upzonings. We've done it on multiple people that have come to us. So I would just like to say that this council has stayed committed to that and the council before that as well.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson.
Yes, I want to thank staff. We did a chat with council in Bluffton at the Bluffton Library two weeks ago. It was very, very well attended. And then last Thursday, we did a All Joy Community Event, which we took this circus on the road, and everyone was there. It was a great turnout, very, very good. I do want to say, right before the meeting, there was a Facebook post that said, I was going to resign early. I want to say that's fake news. So when you see that, completely fake news. But the All Joy meeting was very, very well attended, and we had some great things happening. The landing at All Joy is, is moving forward to design. We've got the Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer with about $6 to $7 million right now for engineering for the sewer in All Joy. We've just gotten the grant for a drainage study at All Joy. The All Joy Bike Path Walkway, the, they just closed the procurement process with that. So we'll be selecting a contractor for that to start, and hopefully that'll be done in, in as little as six months, hopefully, or sometime around by, by next spring. Bailey Park, we are still in the engineering part of that. So again, all those things are, are happening in the All Joy area. I think there's more activity in All Joy than any place else in the county right now. But again, I want to thank Mr. Moore for having everyone there and being prepared. Brian came along as well, and Jared was there. So again, we had, had a lot of staff that was there to, to help with that. So again, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the side? Councilman Rees?
Yes, can everybody hear me with this? Yeah, good. We had, last week Wednesday, Mr. Moore, Jared Bradley, and Taylor Brewer in our community on Hilton Head. We had probably about 70 people, I think. And we talked about stormwater as well, and we're addressing an awful lot. And just tonight, I want to thank this team, this staff to, with the, it's important, it's been talked about for years, and this team, in conjunction with Hilton Head Island, town council, town staff are putting together a great work product with Bay Pines, Tide Point. We're going to do some Bradley Circle work, North Forest Beach fairly soon. But again, major work, but a great commitment from a great staff, and I want to say, thanks.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we have a total of 10 items on the consent agenda. If everyone will look at that, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Of Councilman Cunningham and a second by Councilman Passamit. Any discussion? Seeing none, by show of hands, we approve the consent agenda unanimously. Thank you. All right. At this time, we have ordinances for third reading. I'll turn it over to our vice chairman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So item 12 is ordinance 2025/29, an ordinance to make appropriations for county government and special purpose districts for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, to levy taxes for the payment thereof to adopt service and user fees to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming into the county and other matters related thereto. Can I have a motion to approve this ordinance, please?
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
And just to recap, the vote at first reading on May 12 was 11-0. The vote at second reading, May 27, was 10-0, as amended, and I'm sure that'll come up. And so we have a motion for, a motion and a second. This is a public hearing.
Before you open the hearing, can I ask that council entertain a motion to amend the ordinance? And this is at the, because staff has been communicating with the auditor to make sure that it's clear that council's intent is that they break out the millage into separate categories. I would like for council to entertain adding a sentence to section one of the ordinance. And I've got a motion prepared, if you're willing to entertain that. And all this does is say that the auditor is directed to print on all tax notices, the tax millage breakdown is shown in section two of this ordinance, including any special tax district millage. The entire breakdown on the tax bill is what I believe council's intent is. And we'll make sure that's in the ordinance going forward, and it has been in the ordinance the past two years.
Can you read it again?
I will make that motion because I already had that up as a discussion item.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, we have a.
Let me read it again.
All right. The auditor is directed to print all tax notices. The tax millage breakdown is shown in section two of the ordinance, including any special tax district millage. All right, I have a question.
A motion and a second, so we'll open it for discussion because you have a question? Go ahead.
Can county council direct another elected official?
That was my question.
I mean, should it say auditor is requested or?
Requested, but state law directs that he print the tax bills.
Well, do we need to cite the state law then?
I don't think you have to cite the state law. He knows what that is. Just putting your intent that he break out the millage is all you're doing there. And if you prefer to use the word request.
It's not comfortable telling another elected, directing another elected official.
What was the language that was in the ordinance last year and the year before that?
What did it say?
Exact language.
And I'm, I agree with Ms. Howard, we don't direct other elected officials, but can we say, I mean, it's our preference to put that in there. That's what we want. And that's for the, you know, for the residents.
He wants to comply with council's intent, but you have to make your intent clear. He wants to comply with council's intent, but you have to make your intent clear. And if you don't put that in.
So why wouldn't the motion be, it's the intent of council that the tax bill?
Act. What are your thoughts?
Your lawyer.
It hasn't historically been the intent of council to obviously break it out on the tax bills. So Ms. Tabernick's motion, I can understand that where you would just clearly add some verbiage that said, can I see that real quick? Add some verbiage that says council intends to break out as below, not necessarily, same paragraph, but yeah. It's always been understood that that is the intent of council. It's just, and I believe he emailed you earlier today and he was comfortable with that, so.
You can make it say, is the intent of council that the auditor print on all tax notices the tax.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that. Okay, so we have that motion with that.
I want to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with that.
Can we just reiterate exactly what it says?
Yeah.
Is the intent of council to, that the auditor print on all tax notices the tax millage breakdown as shown in Section 2 of this ordinance, including any special tax district millage.
And this has been going on for quite a while. We've tried to get to this point. I mean, we, we want the public, for the public to know exactly what the millage is for specific things. Did I say that simply enough?
Yes.
Okay, but that's the intent.
So for the public's knowledge, Brian, you know, Mr. Hubbard held up what's there, but it's actually in our packet.
Section 2 of your ordinance is setting of millage rates and it breaks down the millage to county operations, higher education for USCV, higher education for TCL, purchase of real property program, indigent care for Beaufort-Jasper Housing CHS, indigent care for BMH, economic development, capital improvements, and county debt service. So that is all broken down on the tax bill, so the taxpayer knows exactly what millage he's paying for each of those categories.
Okay.
And the total is 59.5 mils.
Okay, any, you're handling this.
Sorry, yes, any other discussion item this one? Mr. Reed, do you have a question?
Yes, Chairman, Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this moment.
We haven't finished this.
Wait, any question on this motion?
No.
Motion to amend. All right, nothing else, let's, let's vote on the motion to amend as noted, with the intent of county council.
With the intent, not direction.
Right, is the intent of council, correct? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, so that is the First Amendment. Did you want to talk about that or?
Oh, no. I mean, I, we had discussed this earlier, we could just have a, you know, verbiage entered in there that says per the breakdown below, as listed in Section 2 of the millage. I mean, I understand what you're saying, you don't want to direct the auditor and I totally understand, but I think all we need to do is just add those four words that says per the breakdown below.
Okay, so back to our original motion and seconded on the ordinance. Mr. Reed's.
Is this where I'd make my motion to fund?
It's totally up to you unless you raise your hand.
Well, I would love to, well, thank you. Can I make a motion?
Yep.
Thank you.
No, you want to amend the.
I would like to amend a motion in conjunction with a colleague of mine down at the end, Larry McCullen, to bring back money to Island Rec. And I just want to say a couple of things upfront. Last week, we had a motion to take some money away for very worthwhile causes, not, we don't want to hurt those, but it should not have come out from Island Rec. And I gave each council member something that was near and dear to them. It was a complete breakdown of the monies that was, were appropriated last year.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reed, please make the motion first and we have to get a second.
Okay.
So give me the concise motion and then we'll discuss.
My motion is this, that we consider tonight, in conjunction with Larry, my co-sponsor, to bring money back to the Island Rec as appropriate.
How much money?
Okay, no, your motion would be, I make, I amend the ordinance to say I would like blank dollars for Island Rec Center and because we are budget neutral, you have to tell us where that's coming from.
Okay.
So frame your motion.
I would like to at least get it back to 200,000 as Mr. Sol talked about. And I think we can get it out of economic development.
All right, so your motion is to increase the funding to Island Rec to 200,000?
Thank you.
And the funds will come from the Economic Development Corporation?
Yes.
All right, anyone want to second that?
I'm happy to do that.
Mr. McCullen seconds it. Now it's open for discussion, go ahead.
Listen, I'm telling you, I love this process and I like the fact that we're doing it in front of the people we work for, so that's, listen, we're learning this together. Again, my focus is not to take money from soil conservation or mental health. My thing is that we've got to come together and get back money to an organization that helps people not only on the island, but many families off the island and unincorporated with incredible scholarships and lessons and all, like Mr. Sol said, 40 some odd years. As this council member is, you know, savvy with what's going on, one thing I've learned is that folks like the Island Rec are directly with our people. And I don't understand why we would want to do that. So it is my, I'd love to open us up to hear from the council. I believe economic development is a major worthwhile cause, but the millions of dollars that we provide there, I think that that group would support what we're doing here tonight. That's my opinion.
All right, any other comment from council?
I have a comment.
Mr. McCullen?
I just want to talk a bit about the logic of restoring the funding here to, to the Island Rec Center. I am not happy shopping these days. I don't like to go to Harris Teeter or Publix or Walmart or buy anything online. The prices have gone up and I have to come to realize this is no longer 1950, which was my favorite year. And it's no longer 2010, but actually we're in 2025 and everything that we do costs more money. And when people are being paid, they're being paid more money so they can have a fair kind of lifestyle. And these are the things that every business and every corporation in America are dealing with, rising prices for the consumers that everybody blows back on, but also trying to provide more money to their employees so they can have a good life. The Island Rec Center was built by the town about 40 years ago and we have no county facilities on Hilton Head Island. The Rec Center only has a budget of about $4 million. They get that money from the town, they get a sizable amount, but they also have fundraisers, they have donations that are made, they have cupcake sales, they do car washes, and they have barbecues because they're raising this money for their nonprofit privately after they get the money from the town. So they've asked us to give them, I thought the request was $225,000 and I was prepared to support that, but the director of the facility is here tonight and has requested that it be 200,000. That's 5% of their budget. They had 675,000 visits last year at that facility, 675,000. Not only the people on Hilton Head, not just the municipality, but people from the surrounding area who lived in the unincorporated areas of Beaufort County. These are our constituents that we're talking about. Tom and I each have about 18,000 constituents on Hilton Head and we're representing what we think are their best interests and asking for this to be funded because people of all ages use this facility. Particularly the pool facility, which is open all year because in the winter they put a cover on it. There are kids coming in, learning how to swim, which may save their life sometime in the future. There are people who are octogenarians going swimming there for exercise. There's a master's program there as well. The pool is constantly in use. I live quite close to that facility, I go over there frequently and I see what is happening. They're busy every day and if you can imagine 675,000 visits in a year, you can imagine the work they're doing. They're not asking for very much here. They're asking for 5% of their budget. We have no county facilities on Hilton Head. I don't think this is an unreasonable request. And I'll tell you something, I've done a little research, I spoke to the county treasurer. The property owners on Hilton Head contribute $280 million a year in taxes in this county. $72 million of that goes to county operations, $27 million of that goes to municipal operations, and they're asking us for $200,000 where we have no county facility. If we were to build one, it would cost us millions of dollars and it would cost us millions of dollars to operate it, not 200,000. I don't think this is an unreasonable request and I'm going to ask my colleagues to consider the taxes collected from Hilton Head of $280 million and the ask of 200,000. And I'm sorry that Frank reduced it from 225 to 200 because that's the number I wanted to see. So I'm asking my 10 other colleagues here to consider what we can do to support a facility where we have no recreational facilities. And I'm asking them to grant what Mr. Sol has asked for tonight, which is $200,000.
Thank you, Mr. McCullen. Mr. Lawson was next.
Yes, and I've always been a big supporter of the Island Rec Center, so I've got a couple, I've got a statement and a question. But I lived on Hilton Head from 90 to 96 and my kids actually went to the Island Rec Center. So I know what they do, I know everything that they offer and even more now than it was before. I've even, I think, six of the last seven years, even served beer at the Oyster Festival every year and volunteered my time on a Saturday to do that. And I think Mr. McCullen has agreed to go with me next year, so also keep him away from the beer. But my question is, obviously, is this a minor change by moving it from the economic development to the Island Rec Center?
Correct. Your overall dollar figure for the outside agencies is not going to change and it will not change the overall budget. It's just you're reallocating the way you're appropriating it.
Not going to affect us having a approved budget?
If that motion passes, yes.
Okay, all right, good.
Both of these changes would be minor changes.
Yeah, Mr. Passamit?
To ensure that everybody understands, we will increase the recreation budget from the current amount in the budget of 173, 694 by $26,306 to 200,000. In order to make the budget whole, that means the economic development operations goes from 513, 750 to 487, 444.
And part of that economic development, 120,000 goes to SCA?
Yes, yes. So the budget now is whole.
If this passes.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, I guess I just have some questions, I guess for you and maybe Mr. McCullen. Mr. McCullen came up last year asking to increase it from, I believe, 150 to 200. And I seconded you on that. I was the one that, with you on that and thought we needed to do it and we changed the budget, I believe, on the second reading for that one to make it happen. I guess, when we did that 150, the logic behind it was that Red Cedar was closed at the time the pool, or MC Riley. Thank you, MC Riley was closed at the time. And that was the justification behind it. So the original budget is still 150. So am I, as a associate, this is a $50,000 increase, not a $27,000 increase? Because that was done for a year before a need in the county at the time. Not saying I'm against it, I'm just saying, to look at that number as justified, we moved money over there for a specific reason because of a time in the county where they believed they needed extra support. Just to make sure that I understand your numbers, Mr. McCullen, you said 650,000 people went there last year?
That's right.
That's almost 2,000 people a day.
Doubting that number, do I have to go and prove it to you tonight?
That's.
This is the report that comes from the Island Rec Center. They're the ones that keep the records. They also say 77,000 people go to the pool, but I'm sure they don't all go at the same time.
Not arguing that, just breaking down the numbers far, I was actually going to use that number to advocate for you, but that didn't, but if that's the way you want to go with it, then I rest my case. I was persuaded to begin with, actually, when I walked in here, not persuaded, but all right.
I'd like to comment. So Mr. Cunningham reiterated what I was going to say. Last year, every outside agency got a 5% increase voted on by this council, except Island Rec Center. The majority of this council gave them a 34% increase, $50,000, to accommodate people that were using MC Riley, but it was closed for renovation. At that time, we asked to collect some data. The director was asked to provide data. When he presented, we got no data. I don't know how many people went. I mean, if I had a child at MC Riley, I'm not driving over the bridge to take them to swim for two hours because children have no attention span. But that's where we were. We made it clear last year and it's on public tape. We said to the public, it's a one-time anomaly in the budget because MC Riley was closed. That was a 34% increase. What's in the budget right now, 173, 694, is a 16% increase from 2024. There was a lot of inaccurate information put out to residents that we were not going to fully fund it. We don't fully fund the Rec Center, that we were going to force it to close in the winter. We have no control over that. Everybody directs their own budget. If you all recall, every agency that came in front of us said, "Well, we're not sure about federal funding." Well, they're cutting state funding. And where did they come to the county? But it's our responsibility to monitor what we spend on the county dime. So that's why it went to where it was. So last year, we were very clear, it was a one-time $50,000 bump. If you approve it this time, you are increasing the budget 34%. And I will not support this amendment. Anybody else?
Sure.
Mr. Glover?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I, I don't have, I didn't have a problem supporting the Island Rec and I will support the Island Rec. However, I do have a strong passion for the Economic Development Board and I believe in that program as far as job creation in Beaufort County and what they're doing. We just took a mill from the Economic Development Board and for us to now, without their knowledge, take any portion of that out of their budget makes me wonder, are we sending a message to Mr. Otul that we are not satisfied or pleased with what they're doing in their effort? Most of their money basically goes with the staff and to do their programming and part of that money also goes with the alliance that I never really felt we needed to have, but we were told eight years ago when I came on council that we had to be a part of an alliance. So we are part of that. We get very, for some concern, very little work from them. Most of the work is actually coming from them. So I would have a problem supporting this motion as on the table. I would commit to Island Rec that there may be opportunities in the budget process after this is approved, as we go through the year, that we have some funds that may be available. And I will commit to funding, using those funds to completely fund their, their budget for the rest of the, next year.
Just to be clear, Mr. Glover, the amendment on the floor is to take the money from Economic Development. There is no other, that's the amendment on the floor. Any council member hasn't spoken, wish to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. You know, I'm kind of torn because I do want to help them out, but on the other side, last year, I do remember that we were concerned with the accounting and we asked for more data. I just got this today and it's, it's nice to see some of these numbers, but I think we were expecting more itemized breakdown of the expenditures. If we were to approve this and increase it, I would say that we treat it like a tax and do it on a reimbursement basis and require receipts before the money is given out, just carte blanche.
Currently, the setup for outside agencies is that we do quarterly transfers, but I'm sure we can change that council desire, so.
Vice Chair, can I?
Anybody else that hasn't spoken? All right, the amendment is on the floor to take the money from Economic Development to put it into Island Rec.
Vice Chair, I have one more thing to say, add to this. Is that fair?
Please make it brief because.
Oh, sure, sure, absolutely. Number one, I think Mr. Otul would be very pleased to hear what my colleague York had said just now. had said just now. I appreciate that. We all feel that way about his efforts and what he's doing. One thing I will tell you is I did meet with Mr. O'Toole and I did give him my thoughts. And, you know, again, I'm with the people constantly and the work that this Island Rec does with our elderly, with our youth, keeping them off the streets, getting things going and giving them a place to go. I mean, Mr. McKellen talked about the usage there, the visitors. We had, so, you know, I mean, that's shocking how many and I think it's wonderful. So please feel comfortable in knowing that this council spoke with Mr. O'Toole. Now, he's pleased that we're going to-
The council did not, you did. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Well, this councilman, this councilman talked to-
Yeah, let's vote on the amendment.
And you can follow up on that and this is all recorded, so it's not anything I'm saying that's not proper. Now, again, I value all these agencies, but the way we went about taking money from the Island Rec is not the way we should do things. That's another thing we could talk about.
Mr. Reed, I'm going to stop right there.
By all means.
I'm going to call for the vote on the amendment. Would you do a roll call, please, Ms. Brack?
Yes, ma'am.
This is on the amendment, not on the original ordinance.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Passamit?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew? Vice Chair Tavernick?
No.
Chair Howard?
No.
The motion fails 5-5.
All right, so we are back to the original ordinance, a vote on the ordinance.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Yes. I want to offer, in the spirit of what I said earlier, and I know it's not a whole lot of funds, but in that spirit, the motion last week gave the Solem Water Conservation District $7,770 to add to their budget. They asked for 33,000, $37,770 in the budget request. The administrator's staff recommended 30,000. So in that effort, they received, in that motion that was made, if my math is right, $7,770 toward that. And I would like to offer an amendment to the motion at this time of cutting that in half and leaving half of that funds in the Solem Water Conservation and granting and putting the other half into the Island Rec would give them $176,885, which is a little under what they're asking for. But if that, if this motion passes, is a sign that I am committed to funding them that 200,000 for their line item, if I can get a second.
The motion, if I could reiterate, is to make soil and water conservation, to reduce it by 3885.
Yes.
And to give that 3885 to Island Rec.
Yes.
That is the amendment on the floor. Does someone wish to second it?
I'll second that.
Who seconded it?
Right here.
Oh, Mr. Reed. Comments from council?
Yeah, just clarity. We've already funded 173,000. So how much are you trying to add, another 170?
No, no.
3800.
3800.
Okay, just making sure.
That would require another reading.
170.
Madam Chair, if I should?
Yes, go ahead.
Rather than trying to piece, or rather than trying to go after that incremental or the small amount of increase, can we look at reducing some from Economic Development, taking some from that and seeing if we can trim a little bit off to get them up there to the 26,000, which would make it 200,000?
I will second that.
No, stop. We have an amendment on the floor. Stop messing everything up.
That's not a motion, that's discussion.
That's your discussion. Any other discussion on the current amendment? Stick to the program here. Brian will tell me if I'm not. Okay, any other discussion point? I am not in favor of taking it away from Soil Conservation. When she stood up here, she said if we can't fund her, she will stop classes south of the Broad. Seven of us live south of the Broad. Do we really want them not to provide our children south of the Broad with education? That is what you're getting ready to change. So I will not support that amendment. Anybody else?
I'll be honest. I'd rather it come from Economic Development. I would. That's just me personally, but I would like to have the conversation that, I can't remember who spoke because we had a lot of people speaking. I have no problem doing the funding. Is there a way to do it through, I believe you said, ATAX?
No.
Hospitality Tax has some recreation programs, but I believe this is for general support, right?
General operating. Hilton Head has ATAX money they can use. That's up to them, but not us. This is the current amendment, folks, to take 3885 from Soil and Water Conservation and raise Hilton Head Rec to 177, 579, if my math is correct. I just did it real quick. That's current amendment. Anybody else want to speak?
Madam Chairman, that's, that would be over $8,000 from their previous funding from last year for Solem Water Conservation. I think they can do the program. Thank you.
Anybody else comment on this amendment? All right.
I, I mean, I would just say, if we're going to do it and figure it out, I say you figure out how to do it to the 200,000. I won't support this one either. If we're going to do it, we do it.
Okay, let's do a roll call on this one. This is the amendment. Let's not make them all night.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Passamit?
No.
Councilmember McGowan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
No.
Vice Chair Tavernick?
No.
Chair Howard?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay, so to reiterate, we are back to the original ordinance, number, whatever it is at this point, 2025/29.
The main motion.
The main motion.
Motion as amended.
It's not been, oh, yeah, as amended once for, you're right, to put, to, yeah, the auditor.
Break down the mileage.
So we are back at the motion, the ordinance, with the amended, to put the verbiage on the tax bill. All right, let's take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Passamit?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan? Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tavernick?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good discussion. All right, moving on to-
Oh, you have to have the public hearing. We never had the public hearing.
That's right, I'm sorry. Public hearing, yes. Is there anyone from the public, thank you, Mr. Passamit, that wishes to speak on our budget ordinance, the entire budget ordinance? Anyone wish to speak, please come forward. I almost ignored them. Thank you for reminding me. Anyone? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public comment. Thank you. All right, now, and since we already voted, I'm moving to 2025/28. It is an ordinance to amend Beaufort County's budget ordinance for fiscal '25. Everybody remember, this is not coming, this is passed, the one we're sitting in. It is ordinance number 2024/25 to correctly reflect the Fund 4,000 CIP budget. The vote at first reading and public hearing on May 12th was 11-0. The vote at second reading on May 27th was 10-0. Can I have a motion to approve this ordinance as read?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Passamit. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Are there any comments from council? We've been through this like a few times. All right, seeing none, let's have a vote by show of hands to approve this ordinance as read. Okay, you have it? 2025/27 is an ordinance appropriating funds from the State ATAX Funds as Rec Committee on April 21st was 7-1. The vote at first reading and public hearing on May 12th was 9-2 and the vote at second reading on May 27th was 8-2. Can I have a motion to approve this ordinance as read?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Passamit?
A second.
Second, Mr. Glover. Any comments from any member of council? I'm going to vote against this again to be consistent my third time and I've already expressed why.
So will I.
And Mr. Cunningham as well. So let's take a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? We are consistent. All right, 2025/26, oh, Lord, an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for the acceptance of right-of-way and/or temporary construction easement properties as shown on Exhibit A, pages 1 to 8, for Big Estate Road, Middle Road, and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive sidewalk projects associated with the sidewalks and multi-use pathways, Safe Routes to Schools project, and Exhibit A, pages 911, 9211, for Ladies Island Middle School Access Road project associated with the Ladies Island Corridor Traffic Improvement Project. The vote at first reading and public hearing, May 12th, was 10-1. The vote at second reading on May 27th was 10-0. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance as read?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Passamit, who seconded it? Mr. Glover?
I did.
Thank you. Mr. Passamit's just jumping on these tonight. Any comments from council? All right, let's show by a vote of hands if you approve the ordinance as read. All right, thank you. 2025/24 is an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and provide funding for the purchase of tax map serial numbers, they are all listed here, 100 numbers, also known as North Wigan Fee. The vote at first reading and public hearing, April 28th, was 9-0. The vote at second reading, May 12th, was 10-1, but it was deferred to the next council meeting where that vote at second reading on May 27th was 10-0. Can I have a motion to approve this ordinance as read?
So moved.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Mr. Bartholomew, second? All right. Any discussion on the part of council? Any questions or discussion?
Just one, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
If I'm reading this right, this is not a part of the motion, but it states in the narrative that the last sentence there, it says the majority of the remaining funds from the Rural and Critical Land Program to expand, to expand this important project access. I just ask that that not be deliberate at this time.
I don't understand that. Could you explain that?
Well, it says that the remaining funds that is in the Rural and Critical Land Program, that that money be used for, to expand this important public access. And I'm just asking that those funds currently that's dedicated, that's left, not be expended right now for this project to expand access.
And you would vote against it?
Yeah. Then you would vote against it.
So just to be clear, that's listed as a-
It's the language.
I'm sorry. Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, go.
All right, thank you. So what that is saying is that the funding, the 2.7 minus the half a million of 250 from Green Space and 250 from the Conservation Bank, that is the, the funds that are remaining in Rural and Critical now is a funding source, but that does not allocate the leftover approximately 200,000 after this goes through. We will come back for the allocation of that, so it's two separate things.
Sure, okay. Thank you. Thanks for clearing that up. I can sleep tonight. Thank you.
Any other question? Yes, Mr. McKellen.
Can I get some clarification on exactly what this is saying? Were all these votes in favor of what this says in the previous meetings?
Okay, you want to explain what happened the last time?
Yeah, so I'll go through sort of the whole thing. The, it came to first reading and was approved. At second reading, a request from the seller came forward that a second appraisal that they had done in February be used to identify the delta. Our appraisal was 2.7, theirs was 2.92. And they requested from council authorization for the administrator's part of closing to sign an 8283 form so that they could take a tax deduction for the difference in the two. It was deferred. It was brought up at the last meeting and that was, that motion was made to amend what's on the floor today, to include that verbiage, and it failed 5 to 5. It was a tie vote. And then the original motion passed. So where we are now is that third reading without the amendment to allow the 8283 form to be signed at closing. I hope that made sense.
So we're, we're not allowing the administrator to sign the form indicating that another appraisal exists?
To allow the 8283 form to reflect the amount of the second appraisal and in allowing a charitable donation, just allowing that as being the stated amount or value and because of the delta and then signing the 8283 showing that as being a charitable donation.
The sellers are asking us to do that and we're refusing to do that.
So far, yes.
And what will happen to the sale if we refuse to do that?
So if it goes forward, the seller's going to have an option, either to go to close or not. And, and I don't have an indication either way of how that's going to go. So if, if this gets approved as it's written tonight, we will move forward with authorization to close without the 8283 form.
Right.
At that point, the seller makes a choice. You either go to close or you don't. And if they don't, the whole thing starts over again and I have no idea how that would play out.
They want to send this appraisal into the IRS to get the charitable deduction, but that's not on us, that's on them. So why would we refuse to allow the administrator to sign this? What is he admitting that he's doing if he signs it?
So that was part of a very long discussion.
Yeah.
And Brian, do you want to address or do you want Kate to talk to that? Because I can't speak for what the IRS does or what they're going to do on their tax forms. This, the amended motion was really to have the county acknowledge the value of the second and the charitable donation.
Right.
That's, that's sort of where-
Is that what we're doing with this vote?
No, sir. The amendment was offered at second reading and failed 5-5.
But I mean, the question is, is it, I don't see that reflected anywhere, but does that mean that, that this is what they've requested and if we don't agree to it, that the sale won't go through?
I cannot say that definitively. All I know is they've asked for it and it's second reading. That was, that request was denied and now we're at third reading.
That's why it's not here. So is that any liability on us to be signing that, just acknowledging that their, that their appraisal is higher? We're not saying it's true, we're just acknowledging they have one, right? But that's over and done with already.
Yes.
That's been, that's been voted on and it went away.
It was voted and denied at the second reading. Nothing precludes it from being another motion tonight if council elected to make a motion, have it seconded and vote on it again if it was the pleasure of council. But there is no financial impact to the county. You're absolutely right.
I get that.
I think council was more offended by coming in after the deal was made and you've gone through and you've come to the second reading and they're made aware of it at the second reading and it wasn't part of the initial deal in that process and they didn't want to set that precedent or have that policy out there.
I get all that, but we're not, we're not a party to the presentation made by the seller to the IRS. If they get, if they got appraisal for $5 million and wanted to present it, that's not on us and we have no liability for the actions they take.
Absolutely right. That's between the IRS and the sellers, if they choose to file that IRS Form eighty-two, eighty-three, and if the IRS were to question that and look into it.
But they're going to question them, not us.
I will say that both appraisers were recognized by the land bank as far as being certified and accurate, and they weren't that far apart, being $220,000 apart. But it's the will of council as far as which they want to-
The will of council was five people said that we should let it happen, and five people said that it shouldn't happen, so it was a tie, so the motion was defeated.
May or may not be the case tonight, I don't know.
So when we vote on this tonight to send this forward, there's a possibility that the seller won't go through with the deal.
Correct.
And that's a risk we're willing to take? Yeah, I think so. I'd like to make, I'd like to amend this to have another vote on that.
Would you read the amendment, please?
Sorry?
He's going to read the amendment.
Who is?
You.
Oh.
You want to make amendment, what is the amendment?
Give me about ten seconds to look at it. That'd be okay if I do that, and then I'll read it?
We've already been-
I move the council amend the ordinance by adding two preamble clauses as follows. Whereas a landowner has commissioned an appraisal for tax purposes as part of their due diligence for the sale of North Wigan by a South Carolina Conservation Bank certified third-party appraiser, and that tax appraisal has an opinion of value of two-point-nine-two-oh million. Whereas a landowner has requested the county council recognize the $220,000 difference between their appraisal and the county's appraisal. Is it only $220,000?
Yes.
As a donation towards the conveyance, and that council authorized the county administrator to sign IRS Form eighty-two, eighty-three to confirm receipt of this donation. Following, on the following language to the end of the authorization paragraph sentence, and to execute IRS Form eighty-two, eighty-three to confirm receipt of a value of $220,000 as a donation toward a conveyance of this property to the county.
Okay, that's the motion, the amendment.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bartholomew will second it. Anyone have a comment or question on council? Yes, Mr. Cunningham?
Question number one, this has to go back to second reading after this, correct?
No, I don't think this is a material change.
We're going to have a problem, because we definitely said, the first time, that's why we deferred it on second reading, which is why I'm the one no on the second reading, because I did not want to defer it.
Sir, I think we deferred on second reading because we wanted to have a tax attorney provide an opinion as far as the tax consequences to the county. But this does not change our purchase price in any way. So you're paying the same purchase price, and you're getting the same property, and all this does is let him sign a IRS form to allow the seller to get a tax credit for the difference in value.
I understand what it is, a hundred percent clearly. My point is, we deferred it, yes, for that reason, but that was because we were told we cannot change it after the second reading, or we'd have to go back to second reading. That was why we said to defer it, so we could get more information, and so if it did end up changing, then we didn't have to take it back.
Yeah, I don't recall that as the reason. I recall as far as being council was offended because it came to the second reading, and then-
That's why I voted no. For the motion, yes.
One of our council members wanted the advice of a tax attorney that specializes in that area.
Yes, we wanted the advice of the tax attorney, which we didn't get. But the reason we had to delay the motion was to have the time to do that, because you were saying we could not change it on the third reading, or we could have went forward with the second reading, and then changed it on the third.
Yeah, that's my, not my understanding. If that was your understanding, I apologize if it was communication from me.
I guess, same thing. They still brought it up after, months after we already had a deal. We already moved on to the first reading, and this opens a door for other conversations, for other ordinances we start going through. I mean, when we start opening this door, it means we can have a deal on the table just to get it to county council, and then they can start dealing again with us as it's on the floor with us at county council.
Absolutely right. None of those facts have changed. All the underlying facts are the same.
All right, Mr. Lawson, you want to?
Yeah, and I'll just kind of repeat what I said last time, is the fact that this is a very important piece of property. I would hate to see us, because of semantics, lose this property whenever this is not costing our constituents, the people of Beaufort County, any more money by signing the tax credit form. And again, it's not on us. So again, for, for us to, to sit here and, and not be able to close on this piece of property, have the seller walk away, I think we're, we're missing out on something that's not costing us a dime. But again, this is part of the procedure. I would support Mr. McCollum's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Mr. Passman?
Yes, Mr. McShane told us that going forward, the process they will use is different than the process that was used this time around. We will not, I'm going to support the amendment.
Anyone else? Yes.
And actually, kind of piggybacking off what Mr. Passman just said, you know, I think part of the reason we're in this issue is because we don't have a policy on this, and hopefully we can work towards having a policy underneath the Greenspace Committee in order for it to be repeatable. Because I think this is going to be an important part of it moving forward.
Mr. McShane said that his committee would work on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else comment on the amendment?
I have one comment on the amendment. This property was for sale for years, which nobody purchased, and we're talking about it's zoned for six lots. So we're saying we're afraid to lose a piece of property that has been for sale for years, that they have to have four or five people agree to sell, which we've got done on the table. But clearly they haven't been able to do that with anybody else. So I'm just saying we're being pushed around. Like, I'm just tired of blowing whichever way the wind blows, I'm sorry.
I don't think anybody's pushing anybody around. They've just, they made the request, some of council was fine with it, and some of council was offended with it, and it's for whatever the majority of council here tonight want to do.
I think it's just offended, it's the fact we had a deal.
Yeah.
And now you're negotiating after the deal's complete.
And I agree, Mr. Cunningham. However, amendments on the floor, we've already been through this once, but let's take a vote.
Vice Chair, will I have one comment?
Oh, yes.
Actually-
Please.
Go ahead.
If we're going to, as Mr. Passman says, if we're going to make this part of our criteria somewhere down the road, why don't we set the precedent right now that it's our goal? If this is not proper, the way this negotiation was done, and we're going to change it, and not could be called like this again, why can't we show the people that we're not going to tolerate it now?
Well, I want to make sure that everybody's clear, that sometimes the request comes in when you're discussing and negotiating a selling price, and sometimes it comes in after the fact and asks you to do that. This one just happens to come in during our process, and that's what kind of upset a few council members. But it could occur at any time. It could have come in after, they've closed, we own it, and they could show that-
So, Mr. Holbert, to your point of view, then, let's put it this way. If we, in the next month or two, come up with this plan, and we put it in place that we're going to follow these guidelines, and we go through this property, this type of, you know, proposal, and it's a real valuable one, but they change it after the first or second reading, what are you going to advise us to do?
Mr. Atkinson?
Yeah, no answer on there, that's beautiful.
No, 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 I'm going to answer that question. I, I think I'm a more appropriate person to answer that than an attorney. And the reason why is because I was instrumental and helped write the Greenspace ordinance. So the reason why it's a different set of rules moving forward is because this is the last effective purchase, if it goes through, for rural and critical. Unless council decides to revive it and refund it somehow, there will be somewhere just under $200,000 left in that program in total, which is leftover interest on a twenty-year program. So staff's plan is to close that program out, bring a proposal back to council to reappropriate the leftover interest, and moving forward, we are under a completely different set of rules, different process, everything with Greenspace. So it's not that we're going to come back and change anything as it relates to this program, this program is going away. So assuming that this goes through, if not, you still have $2.7 million that we have to spend, and, you know, but assuming this goes through and closes, that program goes away, and everything moving forward is through Greenspace, which is an entirely different program, start to finish. I hope that helps.
It, it does, but it just brings me back to, if we're going to want to change this program going forward, as was discussed and talked about, why can't we change it right now to go with the deal that we made? I mean, that deal was made before the first reading.
Yes, sir. When you say change the program, I assume you're talking about Greenspace, and there is a-
I'm talking about, we made a deal before the first reading.
I understand.
And then we're putting our county administrator on the hook to tell the IRS, yeah, we think this is fine.
I just wanted to explain the difference in the two programs.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Dawson wants to speak?
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Dawson's been waiting first, please.
If I could just answer his question, though.
Okay.
You asked me, what would my advice be? For me, it doesn't offend me, because negotiation occurs up until the very end, I'm used to that all the time, changing. But nothing offends me as far as you want to stick to the terms of the deal that you dealt and agreed to either. I mean, it can go either way. That doesn't bother me at all. It doesn't bother me if we give it, it doesn't bother me saying, no, we made a deal, stick to the terms of the deal.
Okay.
That's my advice.
Thank you. Mr. Dawson, I know you've been waiting patiently.
That's why I have a lot of patience.
You go.
Yeah. I'm going to vote against this motion for the simple reason that this property owner is actually asking us, the county, to accept $220,000 donation as conveyance for tax purposes between his appraisal and our appraisal. And I don't think, I wouldn't say it's unethical, it's just that I don't think it's right for us to do it. So I'm not going to support it.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Glover, you were waiting?
Yeah, I, I, my comment is really a policy question that I'm looking forward to in guiding this council and this administration, is not to deal with the rural and critical or the Greenspace program. What is the county policy moving forward in a situation like this? So I'm looking forward to that, that's all. And I think Greenspace said they can work on that to present to us, and that's what I'm looking forward to. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to call a question.
All right, thank you. So we are voting on the amendment Mr. McCollum made, so all in favor, raise your hand of the amendment. One, two, three, four. You have that? I can't see down there. All opposed?
Motion passes.
All right, so now we are back to the ordinance as amended. Huh?
Six-four.
Six-four?
She said it passed, yeah.
Six-four?
Okay.
Six-four.
Who's, who?
Now I'm back to the original ordinance as amended. All in favor of the ordinance as amended, raise your hand. Is it, I can't see down there.
Six.
All right, all opposed? It should be the same, but what do I know?
It is, six-four.
Okay, six-four. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance or second reading, I'm going to apologize to the school district because they're still here. This is twenty-twenty-five slash thirty-five, an ordinance to provide for the levy of tax-
Brian, need your time, we need to-
Yes, all right, I need someone to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, and we extend past the eight o'clock hour for our meeting.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. All right, twenty-twenty-five slash thirty-five is an ordinance to provide for the levy of tax for school purposes for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and to make appropriations for said purposes, this is the public hearing, the vote at first reading on May 27th was ten-zero. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Passman.
I'll second.
I'm going to start letting him just say, can you make the motion? Mr. Bartholomew, you second. This is a public hearing. I do want to recognize our people from the school district, because if there's a question, you'll be here. Again, Dr. Rodriguez, if you would all stand up so they could see who are. Colonel Guyer, Ms. Strados, Tanya, I can't, ah, Robert, okay. So they're all here, so this is a public hearing. Anyone left from the public that wishes to ask a question or make a comment on this ordinance, now is your moment. And, Tanya, we put up your original sheet. Do you want to make any comments? I mean, you've been through this twice in detail.
No, I think that was more good.
All right, thank you. And for the public, you can refer to pages four-ninety to five-twenty-one, it's all in here. Anybody from council, I'll close the public hearing, there was no one. Anyone from council comment? Oh, Mr. Cunningham?
I guess I just had one question. I've had, I guess, a couple teachers ask, and I try to explain it, but I don't want to give them any false info. So I know starting salary starts at the $60,087. Any teacher that's above that is also getting $4,000 raised as well, correct? Thank you, by the way. How are you today?
Yes, every cell in the teacher's salary schedule, so every teacher would get $4,000 plus a step increase as well, so.
Matter if it's whatever year, bachelor's plus eighteen, master's, everything.
Yes, everyone across the board.
Perfect.
Yes.
This should really help us attract teachers.
Yes, we believe so, and that is the goal. So we think that we could be in the top two of the state with this rate, and we're very excited about that, and it's going to help our recruiters do, make their jobs a lot easier.
I like how it's keeping them.
Yes.
And we're taking care of the ones that have already been here, and put in the time here as well. The last couple of years, we really focused on raising the starting, and they know we had a lot of bonuses to keep them for cost of living and everything, but now it's guaranteed that it's going to stay and keep it, so.
And the twenty-eight to thirty years steps will move from twenty-eight to thirty, so that's going to encourage those that are at the highest levels of steps to continue, and they would get a step increase where they, if we, if we were not increasing the step, they would not get a step increase, so they would only get the $4,000. So that is encouraging our most senior and veteran teachers to stay on just for a little bit longer.
You know, Representative Erickson, at the legislative delegation meeting, said she was so proud they've raised starting salary, I believe $48,000, and I'm sitting there saying, okay, you are nowhere near Beaufort County, but we understand us for the state, so good job taking us higher. Anybody else comment, question? Thank you, Ms. Crosby. We will take a vote. All in favor of this ordinance as read? All opposed? Thank you, everyone from the school districts. Have a good night, what's left of it. Thank you.
You all stood a long time for that.
I know. Thank you. All right, ordinances for first reading, here we go. Twenty-twenty-five slash thirty, an ordinance establishing a formalization process for Beaufort County historically maintained roads, known as legacy roads, and the execution of any and all associated instruments of conveyance to the county. This is a public hearing, so it's first reading. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Passman and Ms. Howard, and, so Jared, do you want to say anything before I go to public hearing? All right, it is a public hearing. Anybody left that's not an employee that wishes to speak? All right, anyone on council have a question? This is our first reading, so Jared's here to answer any question. All right, then I'll call the vote. All in favor of this ordinance as read, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Twenty-twenty-five slash thirty-one is an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for the conveyance of right-of-way, known as Orange Court, Prince William Drive, and Indigo Woods Court to the town of Port Royal.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Howard, second by Mr. Cunningham. This is first reading and public hearing. Anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this ordinance as read? Feel free to come forward and entertain us a little bit. Okay, anybody from council have a question? Yes, Mr. Glover.
Yeah, Jared, you can probably answer this. Is this, is this the situation where developers have gone in and built roads and then conveyed over to the county?
Yeah, so these roads are old roads, it was a subdivision from 1979, and I assume it was before my time, literally. So I assume it was a developer, and, and the county accepted them, and then now the town of Port Royal is requesting to take ownership.
So when they go in, developers go in, and they build those roads, and then they ask the county to take over?
Yeah, that's not our practice today, but that was historically a practice.
Got you. Okay, thank you. You clarified that question for me, thank you.
Anybody else question or comment on council?
I know.
All right, all in favor of this ordinance as read, raise your hand. Thank you so much. All right, we're coming to the end. Twenty-twenty-five slash thirty-two, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of right-of-way, known as Sixteenth Street Extension, and a related drainage easement to the town of Port Royal.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Howard makes a motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Bartholomew, second. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? I should just record that and keep playing it, you know? All right, seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. Anyone from council have a question? Anyone from council have a question? Nope, all right. All in favor of this ordinance as read, please raise your hand. Thank you, council. 2025/33 is an ordinance amending Chapter 99, Stormwater Management, Article 2, Stormwater Management, Utility Sections 101, Findings of Fact, 106 Definitions, and 109 Exemptions of the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances. Can I have a motion for this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bartholomew. Second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cunningham. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. Is there a question or comment from county council? No, everybody's silent. All right, let's take a vote. Everyone in favor of this ordinance as read? Thank you. 2025/34, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a drain adjizment located at 15 Suzanne Avenue on Pawke Island in Beaufort County, South Carolina. Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Who moved it? Mr. Dawson? Okay, Ms. Howard, second. Public hearing, anyone from the public wish to opine on this ordinance? All right, thank you. Anyone on council have a question or comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, am I assuming that the author of the motion, that Pawke or Pawke-Holland is in his district? Okay, thank you.
At the end of the runway, right, Councilman Dawson?
At the air station.
I don't see the relevancy of the question.
I think it's just information.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, any other comment or question? We're getting punchy. All right, everyone in favor, please raise your hand.
I'm so glad it's not just me.
Thank you, it's me too. Okay, I'm turning it over to you, Ms. Howard. You have resolutions.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Tavernick. We have resolutions. 20-30 is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a memorandum of agreement regarding live coverage, public broadcast, recording, and archiving of government meetings and events. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All right, this is to carry on the good work they are doing with our local.
As required by law.
Yeah, and archiving them too. All right, Resolution 202531, a resolution.
Oh, we have to take a vote.
Oh, all right, take a vote, yeah. All in favor?
All right.
We're all punchy.
All right, it's unanimous, thank you. All right, moving on to number 24, which is Resolution 202531, a resolution memorializing the priorities and goals outlined in the county council strategic planning session held on February 4, 2025, for staff and council to undertake and accomplish in the coming fiscal year. I hope everyone reviewed that. It's very important.
So moved.
Who made the motion?
I'll second.
And second by Logan. Any discussion?
I just want to point out for the public that you will see some of these we've acted on already, and the other, it just memorializes what we talked about February 4. It's very good information.
I just wanted to, I guess, just language, it's fiscal year, not physical, because I know that is different.
Yeah, fiscal year.
It's fiscal year.
Here for you, stealing me coffee.
Any other comments or discussion?
Everybody owes him something.
This is, this is our, what we agreed to do, what we're gonna try and do. It's very important. All right, last but not least.
We have to take a vote.
Oh, we, yeah, all in favor. Second time I've missed it. Okay, all right, it is unanimous. All right, going on to our last resolution for the evening is 202532, a resolution authorizing the administrator to take necessary steps to potentially place a referendum question on the 2026 ballot proposing the establishment of a one-cent capital project sales tax in order to fund/undertake beneficial projects within the county. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Passment. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Councilman Glover. All right, discussion?
Madam Chairman, I would love for the staff to come and present to us at this time.
They will in the future, but not tonight.
No, well, give us something as we move forward. Let the public know what we thinking about, if nothing else.
Right, so we, as part of the strategic plan, we had talked about, are we going to have a, you know, put together a referendum for 2026? And if so, what would be that? And we have outlined the several options, which included, you know, capital sales tax, transportation. And we went through that at a workshop, I believe two workshops, if I'm not mistaken. And so what we have taken, we have staff have taken that together and summarized it because as the administrator, I want to have clear direction from council as to if we're gonna, you know, take further efforts on a referendum that, you know, we have council support on this potential referendum. So with that said, what we're gonna outline is based on the feedback we received from council at the workshop, a one-cent capital project sales tax for eight years is allowed by the code. Allocate the proceeds amongst the municipal partners in the county in order to share the benefit proportionally. Ensure the projects are clear in scope and accomplishable within the timeline. Coordinate with our partners on the capital project sales tax commission participation. That's actually required, and there's a formula for how we would go about putting together that commission. Facilitate public education on the projects and benefits. Partner with non-governmental group to assist in marketing, establish a timeline for each phase of the project. So in a nutshell, that's what's in the proposed referendum here. Obviously, if any member of council wants to add to this or change, that's on the table for discussion.
Hey, let's open it up for discussion. I'll start.
The only comment I would just make at this time is if you would emphasize, from the staff's perspective, the involvement of communities. And I think.
Yeah, I think that's an important part. And, you know, my experience, and my last position is, we actually went out to each, not only the municipalities, but went into the unincorporated areas and took input there for potential projects to, and, you know, as we talk about here, there would be a portion for the county, which would include the unincorporated areas. So we would want to get that input as far as what projects those areas would be interested in, and we would obviously work with council members to figure out where we would need to go to get that input.
That's very important.
And that would be an important, important part of this, yes.
Councilman Rich, you had your hand up?
Yeah, Mr. Moore, I appreciate it. You talked about the feedback you received from council and the direction. I want to talk tonight about, very briefly, about the feedback we received from the people we represent. November 5, they said no to a tax, so I hope that's factored in to what we're gonna do. But I, I believe there's an awful lot of people that don't even want to hear about this. So on that note, I'll leave it for now.
Okay, other comments, discussion? Yes, Councilman Cunningham?
What all is listed in capital projects, like what can be spent on?
Okay, so it can include transportation, it can include infrastructure, to include, you know, facilities, it can include water and sewer projects, there's environmental component. I don't know if we have other.
The split you said in there, is that split evenly across everything or it's split by per capita? How's that split go?
Well, we had talked about, you know, splitting it on the basis of, I believe we'd said, population.[1608.26]